Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 19th, 2012 Selectment's Meeting. Would everyone please rise and join us in flagging the attendance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, just a few announcements. First announcement, I'd like to thank the Veterans' Park Committee and for all their hard work and success on the Veterans' Day Celebration. It was very nicely done and congratulations to all those who worked hard on getting that completed and the sign is quite impressive, so thank you for that. Right now, if we could have a moment of silence for Mr. Jerry Canoia, the former tree warden and member of the Millville Volunteer Fire Department. He passed away October 29th, so our sympathy goes out to him and his family. Thank you. Budget requests were sent out to all departments and boards appointed by the selectmen. Those are due back by December 20th. Blank budgets were provided to the Finance Committee for their elected officials. The license renewal packets have gone out to the businesses in town that serve, sell, serve or sell alcohol in used motor vehicles. The Board will review these renewals at the December 17th meeting. If necessary, a public hearing will be held on that evening. The Animal Control Officer has received a generous donation of a pet identification universal scanner from the Massachusetts Animal Coalition. Our thanks go out to Kara and Suzie from MAC of Westboro. Reminder that town offices will be closed Wednesday evening, November 21st, as well as Thursday, Thanksgiving Day. The Board will be meeting jointly with the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee next Monday, November 26th at 6:00 PM at the Millville Elementary School to discuss matters involving the school, including structural issues, maintenance issues, and ongoing water issues. And last, the Board will be meeting jointly with BMR School Committee and officials from the Town of Blackstone next Wednesday, November 28th at 7:00 PM at the Harton Middle School for preliminary budget discussions. Next, we have a report, I mean approval of minutes and warrants, November 5th, 2012 at 7:00 PM. You all were present.
I'll make a motion to submit minutes on November 5th, 7:00 PM.
Any discussion?
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Hi. I do have a question, but it's not, it's fine. I'm good.
And I do have warrants this evening. First, this was an extra payroll that was done after the main payroll during the last cycle, so this was for the paid period ending November 3rd. And two of you already were good enough to come in and sign this. This was for $900, actually $1,082.89. Next is the payroll deduction for the pay period checks dated November 5th in the amount Next is the current vendor warrant dated today, November 19th, in the amount of $44,405.60. And last is the payroll warrant for the pay period ending November 17th in the amount of $35,923.85.
Do we have a motion to sign the warrants as well?
I'll make a motion to sign the warrants.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Reports of town officials. Nothing?
No.
Okay. No, I, while I looked at Joe, because he just, I see it. Joe gives one every week, every meeting, so I was kind of shocked. So we have the library, correct?
Yes.
Just a couple of things. First thing I want to do is wish the community happy Thanksgiving and from the library as well as cable. Throw cable in there, I know the guys are both busy over there. I just wanted to update, I received an email from Lisa forwarded to me from Helen regarding our septic system and the question was, what is the status of the septic system at the library? Has the Board of Health indicated that it requires its replacement? If so, what is the estimate? Has the capital estimate been submitted? If not, does it need to be replaced? How is it being handled currently? What is the status going forward? I just want to give everybody an update on that. We contacted the Board last year regarding the septic system and they told us that with us being only open the six hours, that we only needed to pump it every other month and but at that time we're only open the six hours. So at the present time, we are not having a problem. We have not had it pumped and we are open double the hours. We actually opened 12 hours now instead of the six. And they haven't gotten back to us regarding anything, so we're leaving it at a status quo, so we're not doing anything. And estimate usage of the bathroom, maybe a handful a week. So I mean, there's not that much going into the system, so we feel if we're going to pump it at 250 a pop, it's quite a bit of money, you know? If we want to put together something for the capital, we probably do first would be the engineering and do that through capital, see what the engineer says, and then go from there. But we haven't submitted anything yet. I just wanted to let you know what was going on because rumor had it that we were looking for $30,000 to put a new septic system in and blah, 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 so I just wanted to get that cleared up.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? First public forum? Anyone for public forum? Everybody wants to get home and get ready for Thanksgiving, I guess. I have no correspondence that I, the only thing I wanted to mention was the Veterans' Day Celebration, which went well. We were, actually, we were invited to the Town of Seco, because holding a little critique forum about Hurricane Sandy and as far as the way things went with National Grid and with the last three storms here, we had no issues in this town with National Grid, so I guess other communities, it sounds, did. We were invited, so I passed it to the chief to see if him or maybe the MEMA manager would like to go down, but, so that's what that is. That's this 9:00 AM on the 29th in Seco, and that was it. That's all I had. Appointments and resignations, we have one from Conservation. Millville Conservation Commission voted unanimously at their meeting on Monday, November 5th, 2012, to recommend the appointment of Eric Olson, who resides at Four Hilltop Lane. He has, he has experience with wetlands and would also, and would be an asset to the Commission. We hope the Board of Selectmen would consider his appointment. Thank you, Amy Sutherland, Secretary.
And this would be through June 30th, 2013.
I think it's great. I'll make a motion to accept his appointment for Eric Olson for November 5th.
Well, I was just gonna say effective immediately through June 30th, 2013.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? And next, we have the Board of Registers.
On this sheet, I just caution, there is a change in the cover sheet submitted by the town clerk. The term actually would expire 2014 and this would be, this individual would be filling an unexpired term.
Okay. Okay, so we have an appointment for a Democratic member, term ending June 30th, 2013, not 2014. Her name is Linda Bassett. She lives at 47 Crossback Street in Millville and, that's it. She's, so looking for appointment, motion to appoint her as a register.
Second.
All in favor? All right. And last, we have one appointment for the Police Department.
Good evening. Chief, how are you? Good, thank you so much. Tonight, I would like to present for your consideration Scott Gou, for the position of part-time police officer. If you look at his resume, you can see he actually started his career with the Town of Millville in 1987. Spent two years with Millville before becoming a full-time police officer in the Town of North Smithfield. He is also a 30-year veteran of the Army Reserves and still active. Comes up with a lot of experience. Certainly someone I'm looking forward to fill the roles of a part-time police officer who just left a full-time position in the state of New Hampshire. Matt Winchell left approximately two weeks ago, so we do have a vacancy for this great candidate. I think he's going to add more wisdom and certainly experience to a, Police Department has an abundance of experience, so I just think he's another great, great asset to the Town of Millville. So I'm looking for your support to promote, actually, appoint Mr. Gou as our newest part-time police officer.
And that's through June 30th of this year?
He was here and he came back, huh?
Yes.
That's a good sign.
That's a good sign.
No, it's nice to know that, you know, he knows his meaning that that running curve is not going to be there.
I believe it's a testament to the Town of Millville, whereas we have the opportunity to attract such candidates. We have no lack of qualified people trying to work for this town, so we're not short on personnel. So it's just another great opportunity to add another experienced police officer that is going to be with us for a long period of time. Not looking for the, the Department pays a little bit more money, looking for something that he hasn't done in the past. Assuming to myself, he's been a police officer over 23 years, so he's not looking for, you know, to start all over again. So we're looking for a mature department, this is where it's at. So I think it would be a great, great addition to the Town of Millville.
Make a motion to accept Scott Gou as part-time police officer for the Town of Millville through June 30th, 2013.
Of course I can. Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Folks, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. It's almost 25 years to the day that I went to the Police Academy in Worcester for the Town of Millville. I had a great opportunity to work for the town for those two years, moving back to my hometown of North Smithfield, that's the reason I left, but it's great to come back here. I know still quite a few people here in the town, and I'm looking forward to reacquainting myself of the town residents and hopefully serving in the capacity that you're looking for.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Were you gonna try and steal my pen? Is that what you wanted?
Thanks.
Okay, we got the Executive Secretaries' Report.
Yes. I just wanted to give the Board an update on the underground storage tank issue at the elementary school. I've been trying to copy you and forward to you any emails that I get on that matter, but just so the public is also aware that the underground storage tank was removed on November 7th and we received word recently that the soil tests that they took from, after the excavation, all were non-detect, so that was excellent news. So no oil seepage there, which was great news. The engineers are now in the process of closing out that matter with DEP by completing and submitting all of that paperwork, so we'll get that done. The concrete pad for the new tank was installed last Wednesday and the new tank is on order due to arrive next week and installation should happen shortly thereafter. So that project is underway and moving along. The Board's meeting on November 26th with the School Committee has several items on the agenda as of now. I've got structural issues. The engineer who prepared the most recent findings report has been invited and will be attending to make a presentation and also be available for questions. I've got the water issues on the agenda. I've asked Deb Trumbull of Swiss to provide just a brief summary update of where we're at as far as the testing and the copper, the lead, the iron, the THF, all of that. So the Board and the School Committee have a solid understanding of where we're at. Later on the agenda this evening, you'll see we have a proposal from an engineering firm, which DEP is requiring we obtain a third party now to review that filter system. So Deb is going to provide an update on that. Bob Ferrari at Northeast Water is working on something he had promised me months ago, and that is a maintenance outline for the staff at the elementary school with respect to what happens with the filters and what has to happen with the anode rods in the big tank, fire suppression tank. So he is working on that and I should also have that. I've got capital items listed. Bob is also going to give me an estimate on the, which Mr. Reposa had actually asked me for, a timeframe on the life expectancy of the big tank, the one that we did the refurbishment of, so we can start thinking about that as a capital expense. So he is going to get those numbers pulled together for me for Monday. I've got an update on the health inspection report, specifically the flooring in the kitchen. We asked the superintendent to obtain two more estimates from local vendors to repair rather than replace that floor. I've got MSBA funds. I thought it would be good to update the Committee on the status of the funds, which you'll see later this evening on the agenda. And then I've asked the Committee if there was anything specifically that they would like to add on there, so that's the status of that agenda.
Do we have a full committee member representation coming in?
As far as I know, they will have a quorum. I don't know if it'll be a full committee, but they will have a quorum, so. Another issue that I've been emailing the Board on was brought to my attention, the Council on Aging had requested the ability to start holding bingo at the senior center. So after researching the Mass General laws, I had some questions with respect to how that was organized and operated, so I forwarded that to Town Council with some questions. And I guess there's been some back and forth amongst some of the council members as to why this had to go to Town Council, and I'm sure you've read my emails, it's really just to protect the town and the officials, to make sure that we're doing everything that we need to do and that we're not doing anything that we shouldn't be doing. So I am in contact with the Council and I'm certainly not trying to prevent that, but simply just making sure that we're doing the right thing. So that is progressing. I did hear back from Council and I did email the Council on Aging with an update as to where that stands. The Class II renewals, which the Chair had mentioned earlier, the Class II renewals went out, the packets went out a couple of weeks ago. Two of those, if you recall, was brought to our attention by the Planning Board that should not have been issued. So although all four renewals went out, those two applicants, should they decide to renew, will need to hold a public hearing. And that will be scheduled that same evening. So we're still waiting to hear back. I haven't gotten any of the responses back yet from those. There were four A, B, C renewals that went out, and we also have one new application for a common visitors license, which is the formerly JNM Pizza. They're looking to open back up under another name. So that will all be handled on the 17th. The Bylaw Recodification Project, as far as I know, my end of that is now complete. I finished that up with general code the end of last week, the last few technical issues. It's our intent to have that prepared for the annual town meeting warrant in May, and the idea is to have copies available well before the meeting so that the public can come in and pick those up and start looking them over. What we'd like to have happen is have the town vote to just accept and reapprove the entire manual as one, certainly not every would be there all night if we had to do everything individually, so that's the goal. We should have the final draft in mid-January, and if there are no, no other changes, we'll start making copies and have those available. And the last thing I wanted to remind you of, Mendon had sent a letter asking if we'd be interested in some type of a shared service arrangement with the Inspections Division, and I did make contact with the interim Town Coordinator, Chief Horn, asked him for some information regarding their budget and their staffing, and asked him for some dates and times where they could meet with the Millville Board, and I haven't heard back yet. So I did want to let you know that that is still on my, my list. I haven't forgotten about it, but I think everybody's just kind of getting busy, so that's still there. I still know we're, we're waiting on that. And that was it.
That's gonna be one of your shorter ones.
I'm sorry?
That must be one of your shorter reports.
Well, I have the whole book here if you want.
That's all right. The senior van transportation, legal contacted us today around 4:30 and mentioned that there's still a few issues that we're trying to iron out with Blackstone's legal, so the draft isn't 100% ready today, so just want to table it to our next meeting. If everybody agrees.
Have we had any correspondence with Blackstone so that they know where we are in the process? I don't want them to think they, you know, they made the effort, they came down, they handed it, miscommunication was a big thing from the get-go, so I don't know if it's via email, a phone call, or something just to say that our legal counsel still has it, we're checking in every week with them, you know, we're on top of it.
Don't give them excuse.
So that they don't, you know, so they can't say that they didn't know where we were, so.
Because he's been talking to Dan Keyes and their legal, right?
Just their legal at this point. So they may not know.
Yeah, well, I think you're right. I think Dan Keyes, we don't want to lose that with him. The Board of Selectment Policies is next. Everyone kind of go over the media policy thing?
or if you wanted to look at the new policies, which would include the media policy or...
Yeah, so, most of this is...
Yeah, what I'm looking for in the bigger packet, these are existing Board of Selectment policies that have already been created, they were already approved by most likely previous sitting boards, but they were all on the computer. What I did was I just tidied them up a little bit, and what I'd like to do is create a manual of all Board of Selectment policies so that going forward, any new selectmen who are elected to the position can be handed this manual and they'll know that all, you know, all of these policies are in effect. And I'd like to have a little, you know, area on there where it says the date that it was adopted and any future dates if amendments are made to it. So these policies are pretty much all policies that the Boards have adopted and should be following going forward unless you all want to request any changes to them. If not, I would just ask that we, you know, maybe just read the titles of them and just in one motion, accept all of them as are.
Could we possibly, I do have some notes written, so maybe if we just say the topic and I'll jump in if I have something?
Yeah.
Or anyone else, Nick?
Appointment Policy.
I do have something in there. It's on the second page of that. It says the Town Clerk shall make a roster of the membership of the Town of Boards. It does include name, voting address, mailing address, phone number. Is that that red book that we get that goes to just town employees or does that go to the general public? My phone number is listed, but I'm thinking of people who may not have their phone number listed. I'm more concerned about the phone numbers. Is that that...
Now, that's not something that goes...
The red employee book that we kind of get, is it red or yellow or probably changes every year?
Yeah, who's read this?
No, you're talking about the local officials directory? No, that's just something I maintain for my own information to provide to people, but the town clerk is supposed to have officially in her office this information. I don't believe this is anything.
It's not like, I'm just, I'm just concerned if someone has an unlisted number, that their number is now listed in the town hall. Do you know what I mean? I think there should be some kind of, whether it's a sheet you fill out, or I know when I go to vote, I can have my, my phone number listed or unlisted on my voting registry, so I didn't know if some of the town officials...
Yeah, the way the town clerk does it, I believe when the individual comes in to be sworn in, and this may be very recent that she's implemented this, but when they come into the town hall to be sworn in, the new sheet that she has asks for their contact information that they would like to use to be contacted and if it's okay to give that out, and that included an email and a telephone number. So that's how it is going forward. I'm not sure how it was done in the past.
I just, I don't know if there could be some type of wording in there, you know? Each employee decides the, you know what I mean? But if it's just for her file, I'm just more concerned about people.
Yes, if it's number two you're specifically speaking of, I think that would be specifically just for her office.
Okay, then I'm fine with that.
But number one is what's available to the public, just a, you know, list of who's appointed and who's on the boards.
Right.
Certificates of appreciation, emergency notification policies.
I just want to make sure that that was, I'm assuming when it was developed, that it was developed with the police, the fire, the MEMA, develop this?
Certificates of appreciation or emergency notification?
No, emergency. We move on. You know, I'm wondering if we should have them look at this? I'm not an expert in this area. I'm not even going to make believe I am, but I mean, we hired good, qualified people and I've been wondering if they should kind of look at this policy and make sure that it is...
We can have, we can have them look at it.
Especially with this emergency situation, they may need to add things or...
Yeah, I believe this was actually implemented by, I think, the Board of Selectmen back in 2005, 2006.
Probably a good time to just make sure that it's inclusive.
Pull that one up.
Yeah, that's just my opinion.
Employee dispute resolution policies?
Yeah, I have a question on this one. I know the employee dispute, I mean, it's kind of basic, but we do have two unions within the community, and does this take any, you know, do we need to make reference that theirs supersedes this? Is there, you know, how do we, how do we address this? I mean, if it's just one department to one department, but now if you get a union complaining about a highway worker or, or a town employee, I don't, I want to make, or someone making a complaint about someone in the union, I want to make sure that there, that we're not going, we're not going to have a legal issue later? So I don't know how the unions play off with this.
I agree. This particular policy was created by, I believe, the Board...
want to make sure that there, that we're not going, we're not going to have a legal issue later. So I don't know how the unions play off with this.
No, I agree. This particular policy was created by, I believe, the board sitting in 2006, and I think it was prior to the creation and implementation of our new personnel policy manual.
Okay.
So this particular policy may be one that isn't even needed. It's probably already addressed in the new manual.
Yeah, I think we need to just make sure on that. I don't want to get in trouble later.
Legal service requests.
Let's see. We have the form. My question is, at the bottom of the page where it says the individuals or circumstances for exemption of written request, on the executive secretary, not that it's a problem now, but it's not always guaranteed to have the person sitting there. I don't know if it should say something at the discretion of the chair or notification to the chairman, you know, even if it's just an email or a phone call, just say, I called legal about this. I mean, the chairman can call at his discretion, the, I mean, you're fine, you're cognizant of making sure we don't overdo our legal, but, I mean, we've had executive secretaries in here that call it the drop of a hat and the legal expense was out of control. So I'm wondering, you know, even if it's set up, that notification will be given to the chairman, even if it's just, I, it doesn't have to be approval.
Yeah.
But a notification that a phone call was made today to legal regarding whatever the issue. I just think that way you've got two people knowing at least what's going on.
Yeah.
Just my thought process on that one. And then the last sentence was that the request for legal services will not be honored by the town council. I was just curious how the town council knows.
I email them each time.
Okay, and they know that, they have that?
Every department that, if it falls under this exemption for the instance, if the police chief calls and says, I need to talk to him because of a criminal investigation, I'll say, okay, and then I immediately email Gary and say, you have authorization to speak with the chief about...
Okay.
And actually, it's actually criminal investigation, yeah, and/or other confidential matter, yeah, because it's some personnel matters that he's also dealt with as well.
Yeah. Those were the only things I had on the legal.
Okay.
So executive secretary with notification to chairman.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Meeting agenda and public comment.
I was just curious, now that the Mass General laws has now cited certain rules and regulations to that, if we should have that included in this section as a reference?
Yeah, yeah, and the new law.
You know, postings of meetings and, I know there's a whole section on it, the open meeting law and how public comment can and cannot be handled, or it's at the discussion of the board, but...
Right, I was going to say, that's actual law, so it's really not part of the board's policy? I mean, you would have to follow that.
Well, I know we stated other Mass General laws kind of in here with the town clerk and things, and I just thought it's a good reference point, you know, for us to, it kind of goes back to this.
With the information that new selectmen are given, they are given a copy of the open meeting law, so we could just reference, you know, for further or specific information, please refer to...
Yeah, oh yeah, I don't mean to put the whole thing out, I just cite it so it's a reference.
Okay.
If anyone hadn't really wanted to have some good reading.
Meetings a minute, or was that it?
No, I think I got more for meetings.
No, I mean for the other one.
Yes, it is.
Meetings a minute?
On the regular meetings, it said we're held on the first and third Monday of each month.
Right.
Well, that's technically not true. Can we write that it's published for each year, available on like January 1st, and the attempt is to make it the first and third?
Right, right, because sometimes would...
Yeah, because we just...
Holidays offset it.
We've done the second and fourth, we've done, you know, because it gets a little confusing, but I think if we just say that the, that the calendar is set...
Yeah.
You know, December of the prior year, with attempts to make it the first and the third.
Yeah.
And then later in that paragraph, we talk about special meetings.
Yeah.
Is this what we technically call the workshops?
No, we technically call them special meetings.
I still call them workshops.
There is no such thing as a workshop, really.
Yeah, I know that, I know that, but in my brain, I still call them workshops.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's all I had on that page.
Remote participation policy.
This is the one we just recently approved, yes?
Yeah.
Right, so we can, you can attend it electronically, by voice or whatever, but you just, you still can't follow it.
Right.
See, that's the only thing you can't do. And then it lists out all the technology that you can use. Submission of town meeting warrant articles.
I am going to be discussing later in regards to the warrant.
Yeah.
So I may want to add, if the board later approves of my proposal, to add something here, so I'd like to just be able to come back to this and just talk about this later.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then the warrant article submission form. That's pretty good. Parade and toll day safety regulations.
Good on that.
Application for...
The release and indemnification, I'm assuming that went through the lawyers?
Yes.
At some point?
Yep.
Okay.
Trench agreement.
Do you remember what year this might have went through? I'm just, I mean, there's a list of people here, police, dispatch, border health, building...
The law just started, I want to say in 2008, is when this law went into effect and this was accepted.
I just, like I said again, I'm not an expert, and I just thought maybe our border health, our highway and our building inspector should just review this to make sure that it's appropriate.
Yep, they were all, yep, they were existing, the people in those positions at the time were all involved in this process.
Yeah.
But I can certainly run it by the new individuals.
I think the rest is just all the trench, which I'm good at.
Okay. So then, so we, motion to accept with changes made, or should we wait until Jennifer adds that other?
You gotta wait.
No, we can just, I can make a motion again.
Yeah, we can motion to add it in again.
Yeah.
All right, let's motion to accept the selectment policies as written and also with the changes just discussed in this meeting. So move.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
So the media policy, and new policies of selectmen. Do this one first.
I think I left my media at home. I think I left my media, that's okay. I grabbed the two, but I didn't...
Relationship with the community, relationship with executive secretary, relationship with other board members, and relationship with town staff.
Why would I?
Yeah.
I don't know.
And declaration of local emergency. Did anybody have any questions on any of those sections?
I read it a while back. I didn't have any exceptions to anything that I recall.
No, me either. So, motion to accept the new, new selectmen policies. So move. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. You guys have a copy of this holding in? Can share it, guys?
What's that?
This is the media.
Oh, it's just a second. I know I've looked at it before.
What do you want? The, it was in last week's, last meeting.
I don't have it on me.
So...
I read it, but...
Is this, part of this is due to the, to the van?
Right.
And I, my only concern with the, with the, like, the article with the Worcester Telegram, I mean, it was their own article and it was produced through, through facts of minutes that we had, public, public information. So I just want to make sure that in the future, not that, and it didn't happen, but I want to make sure it never does happen, that town employees do not go to the media with confidential town information, that's all. That's my only concern.
I mean, we have the, we have the freedom of speech, so anybody can say anything, but
we do have to make sure that any confidential information is withheld. You know, and that's my only issue.
Well, keep in mind, this particular policy really only deals with the executive secretary and the board of selectmen.
Right.
It doesn't pertain to any other town, department, board, or committee, so if you wanted to include...
Well, I wonder if we could include at least people we appoint, right, the board of selectmen appoint, include it in with that so that we're covered. I know elected officials are...
Right, you have no control over that.
Their own boss, basically, as far as certain things go.
Well, that brings the question to the chief of police, chief of fire.
Right.
Although he's appointed by you, he often deals with the press, so I don't know if you want to make an exception.
Well, like I said, as long as they don't reveal any confidential, if, if all he's going to do is, is basically quote any documents or any meetings, public meetings that happen, and there's no law against that, I mean, it's freedom of speech, and I'm not going to, definitely not going to ask anybody to, to not do, you know, take that privilege.
I would, I would think that our committees and boards and departments that are appointed by us and us being their supervisor would come through, do you know what I mean?
Come through us.
Which would come through us to say, you know, there's an issue, or there's this or there's that.
I know the chief gets calls from the media all the time.
No, and I think he's the exception to that, and the fire department is the exception to those, but I would like to think if there was an issue with someone else that they would...
The other, yeah, absolutely.
You know, because we are their appointing authority.
It's just those issues like that thing with the van and Blackstone and the Worcester Telegram. There was nothing untrue put in it, and it wasn't submitted by us, it was submitted by their own reporter with public documents that we had. So it's not like anybody was trying to throw anyone under the bus, but certain, that's all. We just want to make sure that we're, that we're covering ourselves, so.
Could we possibly, there's no rush, but could we possibly look at some other communities and how do they incorporate their boards and committees versus their fire, police, and if they have a policy, you know, maybe we can change the heading and just change this to, you know, media policy and give it to all the appointed individuals to include in our booklet if we, if we, there needs to be some changes or official wording so that everyone can say that they were, you know, it's in writing, this is our policy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so that, takes care of that. Now we move on to new business.
I think we have the new policies, don't we?
We just did before that.
No, it was, yes, I didn't hear. No, it was the second packet, and this was new ones to be booted into the old ones.
Yep, that's what the chair just went through, the code of conduct and the disposition of surplus goods.
Relationship with the individuals, the groups, boards, other boards, involving on it.
You said, okay. I didn't say that, but you did say, okay.
This one. Yeah. We'll work through it real quick if you want.
No, that's, I had one little thing, but you know what, it can be, it wasn't anything that needed to be in writing, it's just something I wanted, so I will follow up and get what I need afterwards.
Okay, all right. Okay, so new, new business. We have the special town meeting warrant.
All right, so I did say earlier...
Yep, we're going to go back.
If we need to. I have a proposal.
Yep.
Last year, there was, I can't even remember the article, and I probably should because I made such a stink about it. There was an article that had an information piece underneath it, and I felt very strongly that it didn't belong there because our warrant is our warrant article, and that has been it. That has been the history of what our warrant articles, our warrant looks like. Upon looking into other towns and communities in Massachusetts, in the area across the country, various states I looked at, what they have, and this is what I'm thinking, this is a small warrant and it might be possible to kind of try it out, is you have your article and then you have a brief history, you know, this is an annual, so all your information's going to be on one page. This is an annual article and this is to raise or, you know, just to fund town positions, or the fire department is looking for this, and it's just a brief little information of why the article is on there. Then underneath it, we always have the board of selectmen and the finance committee has their page of recommendations, but underneath that, we could put the vote of the board of selectmen was three to two, four to one, zero, four, and have, well, we'll get on that, but, and then have what the board voted, and then have the FinCom recommendation and their vote of their board. So as a town voter, you're sitting there with the article, the explanation, and how your two boards voted, and there's no flipping through papers, no, no, you know, trying to figure out what, because for most of us, we go there, we know what we're looking at, but there are people who come year after year, they're still new to the process.
Right.
And if we can make it easy and have that all as one, as our article, as our warrant, I think it would be, I think it would be nice.
Let me ask you a question on that, while you're saying that. Don't, when they read the article out, doesn't Daniel ask the finance committee how they, they say, and they say whether they approve it or disapprove it?
They make a motion, they recommend it.
Or dis, or not recommend it.
Right.
So why would you need that on the bottom of the page when they, every, every article that they say, what does...
Because you don't necessarily know the vote. It could be a three to two vote, it could be a five, zero vote.
But right now, the finance committee provides their recommendations, it's on a separate sheet.
Separate sheet of paper.
So I think what, what Mrs. Wing is suggesting is just including it in the same document, which many towns are doing now.
Yeah, you know, I think it's just, I mean, I thought this was a small enough warrant that we could put it out there and say, give us your feedback. Look, if you don't like it, we won't do it for the annual. But it's, you know, I would hate to do it for the annual if we're going to have 32 articles, and then people don't like it, but put it out there for the seven articles, seven, eight articles. And even at the beginning of the meeting, I'm sure our town moderator would say, you know, we have a new format, let us know what you think of it, you know.
Yep.
I just think it's, I think it's a streamlined, I think it's informational. Once we put our warrant out, it goes online, so now they're getting all of the information two weeks prior, instead of walking in that night, and if you don't watch cable, you don't have cable, you're not really involved too much, you're not, you might not know the recommendation of the finance committee prior to walking in that night, where if it's out there, there's really no reason why people can't say, well, I didn't know, you know?
Didn't have to say that anyway.
Well, but I'm just, I'm just, I know I had brought it up with the finance committee last year.
It's just a little bit more information is what you're saying.
Just, and there's less shuffling of papers. I know where to look for my, I know where to look. I've been going to town meeting for 22 years. I know that, so, but the people who are coming in don't know. Some people would never go into town meeting. They voted for someone in their neighborhood and they were their town meeting rep, so, I mean, coming from a larger community, some people don't know what to do. They don't know the format, they know, so I'm, I'm just thinking, it looks streamlined, it's all the information's there, you've got your history of it, and so what my proposal was, back to the other piece, was when they submit their town meeting articles, that they give any information that they would, like, provided on the warrant. We don't have to do it now, if we want to just test it out and then revisit this later if the town wishes to accept it, but then each committee or each group could put their description of it.
Yeah.
You know, and we could, we want to make sure that we tweak it, that it's not one-sided or the other side of it, but it's just factual, informational, to provide to the public.
Good point.
I just have a question that I forgot. Are you asking also to, if an article is submitted that...
Colin, can you come up to the mic? Please, thank you.
Are you also asking if an article is submitted that whoever submitted... Are you also asking if an article is submitted that whoever submits the article has it on there also? Because sometimes you're reading this out and you're saying, well, who submitted this?
Yeah, right now, they all are, it will say at the end of it, submitted by, submitted by.
A couple of times it hasn't, I mean, I'm not saying this one, but in, in the past it has it, and you're saying, well, who's submitting this, you know?
Right.
Just out of curiosity, because then you could say, okay, it's from the library, it's from...
I think in that informational piece, it would say, the library is looking to blah, 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 blah.
Okay.
Well, you know, a highway department is looking for, fire department wants, so I think it might be included in that, but we definitely can make sure that we have that submitted by.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, so I don't know how the rest of the committee feels, I just thought it would, something I complained about last time, and I said I better just bring it up and, um, see what the reception is, might just be a little more work, but...
If it makes the meeting, oh, smoother, worth it.
It's worth the try.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I mean, your December meetings are gonna be mostly the people who come.
How do you want to address that?
Well, Mr. Chair, if we could get, um, the opinion of the chairman of the finance committee, if you are going to consider it on this particular warrant, I would just want to make sure he has the information available, because it would have to be posted this week, so I would need that from him tomorrow, if we're going to include it.
I have, I don't have a problem with what Jennifer is recommending, and, uh, I think we're all set with the finance committee recommendations. Uh, the article that was following, is it still nine articles?
Uh, it's eight.
Eight.
With the veterans aging.
The highway article, uh, the finance committee will be recommending a statehouse note.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Well, I'll have any information for you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to give it, give it a try on this warrant.
Absolutely. I'll make the motion. Make sure.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right. Very good. Thanks, Joe, for that, for this. Good idea. Um, okay.
No, we, um...
Article by article.
That's what I was asking.
We're gonna read the whole article?
Yes, you are.
Okay. All right, excuse me, Article One, monetary increases, to see if the town will vote to authorize that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as proposed by the finance committee presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding, the line item, or article that will be reduced by the same amount, or take any other action relative thereto. Submitted by finance committee. Keep going, Article Two.
I don't have a problem with this, but why can't we just give this a bylaw of our town, of our meeting, and then have the, and have the, um...
It's Article One, every meeting.
And have the moderator just explain it, or is this just to bring the awareness each time?
It's up to the finance committee if they want to submit it as a, as a bylaw amendment, they could, they could do that.
Actually, do the select change?
We took out free cash this time, yeah.
Ah, okay, I'm good with it.
Because you can tweak it every year, or every meeting, right?
I'm good with it, thank you.
Article Two, prior year unpaid bills, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer, transfer from any available funds a sum of money for the payment of unpaid bills of previous fiscal years pursuant to mass general law, section forty-four, subsection sixty-four, or take any other action relative thereto, submitted by the board of selectmen. The vendor is Eagle Elevator, Town Hall repairs and maintenance, fiscal year two thousand twelve, seven hundred and eighty dollars. Telstone Garage, Fire Department vehicle maintenance, two thousand twelve, twenty-nine dollars. LHS Associates, elections and other expenses, forty-one dollars and ninety cents, that's also from two thousand twelve, and Troy Gunter, Fire Department Professional Technical, from two thousand ten, nine hundred dollars, for a total of seventeen hundred and fifty dollars and ninety cents. Any questions on two? Article Three, replenish the reserve fund, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the final reimbursement payment received from construction grant awarded to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for the construction and equipping of the Millville Elementary School, the sum of thirty-two thousand dollars, to replenish the finance committee reserve fund account number zero 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 one dash one three one dash five seven eight zero dash zero zero, for emergency funds allocated for the Millville Elementary School oil tank account number zero 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 one dash three zero zero dash five seven eight zero dash one four, or take any other action relative thereto, submitted by the board of selectmen. Article Four, fund Millville Elementary School water project, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the final reimbursement payment received from the construction grant awarded to the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for the construction and equipping of the Millville Elementary School, the sum of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight dollars, to find the line, to fund the line item entitled MES Water, account number zero three zero one dash zero 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 dash five three zero nine dash four two, or take any other action relative thereto, submitted by the board of selectmen.
And, Mr. Chair, I'd just call your attention, uh, the initial discussion on this was that we were going to fund it with fifty thousand dollars, but with the recent information from the water operator that we're gonna have to have a, a third-party engineer come in, I had made the suggestion to the finance committee to take the remaining balance, which was ten thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight, and just put it in here as well, um, in case we have some additional work that needs to be done, and, and the finance committee concurred with that, so that is why it was raised to sixty-two, seven thirty-eight.
Okay. All right. Article Five, fiscal year two thousand thirteen, budget adjustment to the town clerk, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer, transfer from any available funds the sum of five thousand, four hundred dollars, excuse me, to supplement the line item entitled Town Clerk, Town, sorry, Town Clerk, uh, Clerical, in account number zero 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 one dash one six one dash five one one six dash zero zero, within the fiscal year of two thousand thirteen, town budget approved under Article Fifteen of the annual town meeting warrant on May fourteenth, two thousand twelve, or take any other action relative thereto, submitted by the town clerk.
Um, I would just like to say that we've had this discussion, I personally am not in favor, but I did tell Mrs. Langto that we would give her her day at the town floor for the townspeople to decide on that, so I just wanna, you know...
No, I wasn't in favor of it either.
And the finance committee, uh, also did not recommend this article.
So why don't we strike the article?
Because I gave my word at a meeting that I'd let her go to town meeting for it.
It's really...
Can we strike the article?
We could.
You can strike any of these articles, it's...
But it's really, the type of government we are is to give the people the choice. We make recommendations.
She's an elected official, if she was appointed, I would have no problem striking it, because it's our department to strike.
But the people voted her in, so the people have...
I understand that, can she, uh, oh, she wrote this article for, I don't know? All right, never mind.
So, anyway, that it for five?
Well, if, oh, she'll get up and...
Yeah, she's gonna...
Yeah, okay, I'm good.
So I guess I would need clarification, um, if we're going to have explanations and the recommendations, yeah.
This board?
If you're not going to all vote to support this, then I would need to include that.
Right, okay.
All right, can I make a motion not to support the article?
A second.
Second, no, oh, any more discussion?
After I, after I read the article, usually in this particular...
Cool.
Really because we've been getting complaints?
Yep. Usually, I'm the one that reads the articles, after I read the article, in this particular instance, with, with something like this, where the finance committee does not recommend it, I'll usually end the reading of the article with, the finance committee does not recommend this article, because usually, we would be ending it with, you know, an ISO move, you know, the finance committee recommends an ISO move.
Right.
So this, in this type of case, it's just, and the finance committee doesn't recommend this article, so there's no motion made.
But I, I think with...
She's gonna need to make the motion.
No, and I realize that, but with our earlier discussion of trying to make the warrant as informational as possible...
I don't think Paul was here.
Uh, we'll have...
You weren't here, Paul, we were discussing...
We're going to have the article, we're gonna have a brief history or description of why we have the article, then there will be a finance committee vote of it, and the board of selectmen vote of it, so it will be all on, it will be on the warrant.
So it won't be a shock to people in the audience, and we won't get a...
Exactly.
Or they won't know what paper to find, it will be available, it's online, and they'll have the finance committee, three two vote, four one, whatever it is, and they'll have the board of selectmen vote there also.
Okay.
So that's why we're doing it.
All right, so, all right, I made the motion, just a second.
All in favor?
Aye. So it'll be a four oh, not to support.
Four oh against. Okay, Article Six, fiscal year two thousand thirteen, budget adjustment for the fire department, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer, transfer from any available funds, the sum of six thousand dollars, to, to supplement the fire department line item entitled fire hydrants, account number zero 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 one dash two two zero dash five eight nine zero dash zero one, within the fiscal year two thousand thirteen, town budget approved under Article Fifteen at the annual town meeting warrant on May fourteenth, two thousand twelve, or take any other action relative thereto, submitted by the police and fire chief.
I actually had a question on this, because I was unable to attend the meeting on Wednesday night, and I was hoping he was still here, um, maybe Joe or Paul, based on...
We talk about this a lot on Wednesday, so what is your question?
My question would be, is, is there, is the fire hydrant system not working currently?
I was gonna ask the same thing.
I actually just had a discussion with the chief about this outside, and we had discussed it with him, with him on Wednesday, um, and what we had discussed on Wednesday was, in the past, up until about a year or two ago, we've always funded the hydrant account with five or six thousand dollars, um, it's about three thousand dollars per hydrant to replace them, and in this past year, we've, we've done two, I believe, Helen, I believe, in this past year, one of them, we were able to scab off of another parts and, and make that happen, but what we asked the chief, we have an aging system, it's, it's getting older, especially down on Main Street and, and, um, other areas, uh, what we asked him was, you know, what do you foresee, obviously, they don't get replaced unless they break or get hit, well, when they get hit, that's better for us, because it's covered under the car insurance of the person that hit them, um, but basically, we have seventy fire hydrants in the town, and about a third of them are fifty to sixty years old, so, and, and those, that third of the fire hydrants, there are no parts to fix them, so if one of those breaks, it's a full replacement for three thousand dollars, so, with the anticipation that one or two could possibly fail on an annual basis, it makes a lot of sense to fund this line item, and, and going forward, it makes a lot of sense to fund this line item at, at every annual time.
And was this line item budgeted as zero in May, or, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
But previous, previous years to that, it was always populated.
And how much money do we have in our reserve fund transfer?
In our, in the public safety receipt reserve, which is half of the...
No, just the regular reserve fund, not the ambulance fund.
Oh, uh, well, after...
No, just the regular reserve fund. Eight thousand, and then how about that, well, I call it ambulance receipts, uh, public safety reserve.
Public safety reserves, which is half of the ambulance receipts, um, is right now eighteen thousand?
If you look at your net, I think it's your next...
Right here, your next one.
So my question is, why are we asking for money when the, the public safety has more than enough to cover if something happens? Like, we're not looking to replace two fire hydrants, right?
We're, we're looking to transfer the money from the public safety receipts reserve into that line item.
Can't we do that on an emergency stand, if we had to, Paul?
We can't, we can't take, we can't take from ambulance receipts other than at a town meeting.
No, reserves, I think they're asking the emergency reserves.
Like the, like the finance committee's reserve fund?
Yeah.
We could theoretically take from the finance committee's reserve.
But you only have eight thousand.
And the, well, the thirty-two should get replaced.
The thirty-two will be...
Paul, do we have any hydrants that you know of, having this discussion with the chief, I wish he was here, but he's not, that are right now, that are disabled? Do you know?
Well...
Not well, yes, do we have any broken, right now?
No, but right now, there is an issue with the fire hydrant system, which is why I was tentative to answer.
There's been an issue with the fire hydrant system.
System, that's not what I'm asking, we're talking about...
It lost pressure today, so, you know, it's...
I understand that, this pit, that's another can of worms, what I'm asking is, do we have fire hydrant right now that's broken?
No, it's a totally different...
Yeah, that's, it's wholly, totally different.
So as far as I'm concerned, I, I, I don't understand why we couldn't pull this item in account for an emergency if we have a broken hydrant, why do we have to have this as a six thousand dollar line item?
Theoretically, theoretically, with that argument, we could get, we could go through the rest of the year, and if something happens with, with the understanding that we could take it from the reserve fund, and then in May, going forward, we should, we should populate that with enough to do two per year.
Right, I think that's what you were getting at, correct?
Yeah, I mean...
I, no, I'm, I'm a brain...
Did he deplete his line item down below its, when he did the one on, the one on Central Street, did he, did he negatively deplete his line item for that, because of that?
He did.
Because if this is a replenishment, that's a whole different animal.
Um, I believe that could be the case, so, but we could replenish it from the reserve fund, since those were emergency items.
Right. So technically, we really don't need this, we can't pull this from the reserve.
Whether it's the town clerk underbudgeting, or the fire police department, or the FinCom, or the selectmen, uh, we made our budget, I just think we have to live with it, and I don't, I don't mean any harm to any of these departments, but, and this is kind of the, you know, the town clerk's been in front of us fighting for it, where this is like the first, I shouldn't say it's not, it's not the first we're hearing about the fire system, the hydrant system.
If we, if we have to do it and pull it as an emergency, then that's what we have to do, but right now...
And most contractors, I think, understand towns, and if you say, you know, you have to wait till special town meeting, most of those contractors are accustomed to some of that, so...
I mean, I, I do agree with that in principle, absolutely, because we've had this discussion at the last special town meeting, too, and, and I agree with that, but with the understanding that going forth into FY fourteen, we should be populating that.
Yep.
Well, that's, that's going down, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this has to be a...
I'm saying, right now, I, I, I think that this...
We're looking, we're gonna have forty thousand in that reserve account, after town meeting, if Article Three goes.
Yeah, yeah, if it goes.
So if something happens with the hydrant system, we have that, and if it's close to May, we can do it at the special town meeting from, from public safety reserves.
Right.
Joe, do you know what, do you have the, the budget line by line to say what, what that hydrant fund is right now, is it a negative number?
Well, how did your commi, how did the committee feel about that?
We feel that it should be populated, that, that line should be populated.
I agree with that.
Just, it's, I don't think, right now, I think it should be populated, but not at, not at this time.
But Joe, Joe's gonna look at that, look at that line right now, if that line's a negative number, then, you know, I, my thoughts might be a little different, you know, my, I might be urging to use the, the public safety receipts reserve, which is what it's intended for, to, to populate that item, rather than taking from our reserve fund, if we have the opportunity to do that at town meeting, and if it fails at town meeting, then, then we use the, the reserve fund.
Yep. Okay.
Get a balance of ten dollars and eleven cents.
How much?
That's negative.
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars and eleven cents.
Ten dollars, that's like three cups of coffee at Dunkin'.
For the guys fixing the hydrant?
Um, so, so let me... So let me understand that the Finance Committee will be recommending this with money paid from Public Safety Reserve.
Yes.
With that being said, I will support that with their balance of ten dollars.
Ten dollars is close enough to negative to me.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that, that was, that was close.
Okay, because I'm pretty sure we depleted that.
But it needs to be every year.
Absolutely.
Because I think what happens is they go, oh, you go to town meeting, you think, oh, they cut their budget, they cut their budget, they cut their budget. And then you come back and you're finding that they're getting reserves, they're getting this, they're going back on.
Well, it's penny wise, it's penny wise and pound foolish, you know, you determine, you cut your budget to, to come in below the, below the revenue numbers and, or at the revenue numbers, and then you realize that you, you cut it, but you really needed it.
Yeah.
No, as long as it's coming from the Public Safety, I think it's gonna-
Thanks, I'll stay because you should go to the next one now.
Yep, Article Seven, Fund Capital Budget for the Fire, Fire Department Turnout Gear. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds, the sum of seven thousand five hundred dollars to fund the capital budget line item entitled Fire Turnout Gear. Account number zero 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 one dash nine three zero dash five three zero nine dash one six. Or take any other action relative there to, submitted by Police and Fire Chief.
The, the Finance Committee is recommending that article also. And the reason being is, uh, the turnout gear, just like the air bottles and, you know, other equipment, has an expiration date-
Yep.
-for its useful life. Uh, it's the one barrier between a, between a fireman and the fire. And i- in the past, those have not been replaced on a regular schedule. So now, you know, we have a new administrator of that department. He's going through and looking at all of the, these items, case by case and, and item by item, u- under the realization that, that probably twenty out of twenty-five of the volunteer firemen have outdated turnout gear. So this is also gonna end up being on a regular schedule basis going forward.
Is it outdated in the sense that it's not relatively new, or is it a safety code that they've changed?
It has an expiration date on it for its useful life, just like, just like the air bottles do, where it's, it's not certified to be used.
Is there a tag there that says the date?
Absolutely, yeah.
And I can say, I'm just saying, me being an expert, I mean, yes, you have expiration dates on your boots, your gloves, your hat, your helmet, everything is certified because of insurance.
Your ropes, your hoses, everything's got a, has a life.
Technically, if someone went into a fire with this on, and they were injured, and they pulled that jacket off, they would say this jacket is no longer good.
It would be an insurance nightmare.
That's correct.
Wrongful, wrongful death insurance nightmare.
And how many turnout gears, seven thousand five hundred by?
Two.
Out of twenty, out of twenty-five? Well, that seems like a very tiny band aid.
Well, the, well, it's not a band aid, what it is, is it's a, it's a scheduled replacement.
Right, you, you, he's rotating.
It's gonna be a couple every year.
And what's the lifespan of one of these things?
Um, I'm not exactly sure, he told us, but I don't remember. Chief, what's the lifespan on the turnout gear?
It depends what kind you get.
Ten years?
About ten years.
So if you're doing two a year and you're rotating them through, then you're-
But you don't have to rotate everything, I mean, they got the new-
Chief, why don't you come on up here, so I don't have to tell them what you've told us?
We're talking about the turnout gear, chief.
About ten years ago, we received about twenty-five sets of turnout gear, ten years ago. So in ten years, it's worn, torn, and-
You wanna replanter some of it a little bit at a time, correct?
We don't have the funds to go and buy twenty-five sets, because they're about twenty-five hundred dollars per set. So we can mix and match some sets to make it work.
Right.
And that's what we're going to do.
Okay.
So if we try to replace two or three sets per year, uh, we'll be caught up. And then if you continue to do that throughout time, you're not forced to buy twenty-five sets at one time. So you span them out, so you get a couple of a year. That way, you never short suddenly needing twenty-five sets times, you know, three thousand dollars, if not more, in the coming years.
Okay.
So the best thing to do is just buy two or three a year, and you're always filtering some in, filtering some out. That's the best way to do it. Unless you wanna give us sixty thousand, seventy thousand dollars. So that's, that's the best way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And this is gonna be a line item each year following this?
We're gonna encourage that.
Encourage.
And that still gives us a forty-eight hundred dollar balance in the Public Safety Reserves if those two articles pass.
Can I ask you a question? How many firemen, not gonna make any presents tonight, how many firemen show up for each call? Like typical fire, how many men are in the jumpsuits typically?
Here's the thing, we have about twenty-four to twenty-five at any given time on the books. You have to look at the time of the call, if it's a Saturday morning, we may get twenty. If it's a Monday afternoon, when twenty of them are working, we get five. So that's why you need to maintain the numbers of twenty to twenty-five, because you never know.
I also know that you have the, you have people at the station, you have people here, you know.
But the answer to your question, the average is seven, five to seven are turning up. But choosing different people.
Right. It's not always the same five.
Exactly, if it's a Sunday morning, you expect to see more, Saturday more, weekday, less. So it's why you have to maintain the numbers, because if you shrink your numbers, and then you have a call during the weekday,
Oh, yeah.
you're in trouble. So the answer is five to seven.
Okay.
Alrighty, Article Eight, Fund Capital, Capital Budget Highway Department Truck. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow and/or transport, transfer from any available funds, the sum of sixty thousand dollars, to fund the capital budget line item titled Highway Dump Truck. Account number zero 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 one, excuse me, dash nine three zero dash five three zero nine dash one eight. Or take any other action relative there to, and submitted by Highway Surveyor.
Mr. Chairman, I call your attention to the very back sheet in your packet. Um, this is information provided by the town accountant, which shows the difference between, um, the cost of a lease through the motor vehicle company, the cost of a borrow through a state house note. Uh, and you'll see at the bottom, what she's recommending is that the town simply take the funding out of stabilization, rather than pay any interest or, or fees on a borrow or a lease. The Finance Committee, um, had some concerns about the use of the stabilization fund, and has indicated to me that their recommendation will be to go with the state house note. Um, the town accountant feels as though taking from the stabilization fund is preferential for the town. So it would be up to the board, um, how you wanna word this article. If you would like to agree with the Finance Committee, you can leave it as is. And then their recommendation would include bar, you know, borrowing from a state house note. If you wanted to use the stabilization fund, you would need to change the wording in the article. And then they would just not recommend the article as you word it.
Okay.
The Finance Committee's position is that our stabilization fund going in to, to this past budget season is long boosting a little bit. But-
Mr. Poselka, could I just ask you to speak right in there, because I'm sure people at home probably can't hear.
We're, uh, the state guidelines for stabilization is, is five percent of your operating budget. And we feel that we should, as a Finance Committee, achieve that goal. Because we're coming into, uh, you know, financial uncertainty going forward. So we need the stabilization. And, uh, it is earning interest. And, and the way we looked at it, if we went with the, um, the state house note, it would cost the town in net twenty-three hundred and fifty-four dollars for, for, for the loan. That works out to, uh, in the aggregate, four percent aggregate, but at an annual rate of one point three one five percent. So it isn't a lot of money in that regard.
Okay.
Do we need a dump truck? I asked about the hydrant, I asked about the turnout gear. Can we get through the winter with one truck?
The, there is potential-
You're not doing a lot of road maintenance, you have a contract of snow and ice, we got a plow on the other truck, yes. Can we get through the winter without one?
We have a sander too.
It's got a sander on it too.
Can we get through the winter without one?
Joe, do you have Brian's sheet with you?
Somewhere, I believe I do.
And I'm sure his answer is no, but can we get through the, because this is the problem, we wouldn't have submitted it. If he firmly believed that he didn't need it, but can we?
Let, let me, let me say this about that. Last year was a mild winter, and he made a, a comparison. If we had the second vehicle in this last storm, he said one of the contractors home. There's three that showed up the second day, and we handed it to the town truck. So if it is a more severe winter, it's possible that, that, no. It's, it looks like there's potential cost savings there. But I, I can't give you a finite, um, number on that, because of the variability and winter conditions and the like. But his estimate for this last storm, just sending out the, the town truck with the sander, we would have saved seven thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Well, you have to look at it, the angle.
You do.
No, that's fine.
And I know, I do know Brian said that he doesn't wanna buy another pickup truck, 'cause it's not much cheaper than the dump truck to purchase. And the dump truck has many, many more uses than the pickup truck. And the pickup truck has been pretty much red tagged, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
It's junk.
We need another vehicle, we might as well buy one that's more functional.
Right. Spend a little more and then-
To save a lot.
Save a lot on, on using outside vendors, so. Now, the cr, the question is, which is the best way to purchase it?
Well, I personally, as much as I respect and love Maryland, I am very concerned about our stabilization. I'm very concerned about the money that we're going to need down the road. And I respect, I know she's smarter than me when it comes to this stuff, but I just can't help but to feel it's in my gut, then to hold on to our money and, and, you know, do the state notes. And even though it might cost us what, the twenty-three fifty-four later, to know that we have sixty thousand in our stabilization for those unknowns.
Yep.
I feel better. I, you know, I'm not a big credit person or, you know, having loans, but-
Comfortability though.
It's so tight right now, and I'm, I'm just, I'm really concerned. I'm really, really concerned, and I, I don't wanna be here in April going, oh, boy, I really wish we had extra sixty thousand in our stabilization, if something came up. So I, I tend to kind of side with the state note. If we, you know.
One of the reasons we came up with that is, like Jennifer said, you know, we have, we put the money in stabilization because we need some stabilization for going forward, there's, there's no question about that. Uh, we did the research through, through Helen, I believe it was, and through Maryland, about whether the article could have been written to automatically put the money back in stabilization without a town meeting vote. Because what we were going, what we had thought about doing was take it out of stabilization, borrow it, borrow it within the town from the town, with the understanding that it would go back in as a third, a third, a third over the next three years in, in a lease item to, in the budget to go back into the stabilization. We can't, we cannot do it in such a way that it goes directly back to stabilization. So each year for the next three years, we would have to rely on a vote from the town to replenish that money. A two-thirds vote to replenish that money. So, so for the twenty-four hundred dollars net, of course, we got the net based on how much we would have earned in interest and stabilization versus, versus what the note will cost us. You know, for twenty-four hundred dollars, for, for the guarantee that that, that money is safe-
Yep.
-to be used for something other than a new town truck, it, it just was logical to the, to the entire Finance Committee for that.
I would say we, we stay with the article as written, go with the state house law.
I also think that this board may want to consider with, with, when and if this article passes, that we asked Brian to come in here. And we explained the importance of why, I personally, the reason I'm funding it is, you know, there's various reasons, but the, the savings of money and that truck. However, he has to manage his staff to have that truck out there and sending someone else home, because I'm looking just at the plow truck comparison, and I've just done a few, but it's eighty-four, eighty-five dollars an hour versus our fifteen. So whether we have to make sure, you know, staffing wise and planning for the storm, that, that truck needs to be out there if we're going to invest.
Yep, with the plow down and the sander running.
Yeah, but the thing is-
Because it might pay for itself.
I, I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but-
Because I'll tell you right now, if he said, oh, it's nice to have and we wanna have it, he's sending a guy home, and that's the reason I'm saying buy it now instead of June, that I wanna see the truck out there.
Yeah, but keep in mind, we, we really don't have any say over him.
We can strongly urge-
We can just-
For working, I don't have a problem saying it to Brian.
I, I, I don't, no, I understand that.
But I'm saying the next time he comes before us, he wants something, I'm gonna be much more critical. And, and Brian hasn't done anything wrong, I'm just saying that we need to say that this, you know, personally, I would have waited till spring. But the only reason I said yes is because of these numbers. This is the only reason why I'm saying yes.
Numbers need for themselves, they just hope he, like they say, thinks the way we're thinking. I'd rather see the truck out than a contractor.
Yep.
Like you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't have a problem with that. But I, I also think that we should say at this time, we really wanna see, you know, it's his discretion to do what he pleases with his department, though we'd really appreciate it.
Yep.
And I think he's, I think he's open minded enough and understanding enough to know the town's position.
Mm-hmm. Alright, so that's-
Can I ask?
Is this with a plow, I mean?
Right. It could be, it could be double.
Uh? Is this sixty grand with a? My question is, is this sixty grand with a plow?
With a plow and a sander.
We have a plow, yeah.
A plow and a sander?
Yeah, stainless steel.
Okay, okay, I'm just, I wanna make sure all the-
That's four foot.
I, well, it doesn't say that.
It doesn't show it on here.
Oh, okay, he had it all broken down.
That's why we're, that's why we're asking you.
That's a nine-foot stainless steel plow and, and a stainless steel sander.
Okay, alright.
It's not a bad price, huh?
No, no.
And I just have a question, I know we had talked about the work off program and adding it, is that something that we wanna think about putting on, let the townspeople decide, or is this something we wanna look for next fiscal year? Have a better grasp on how it affects our taxes and the rolls and-
The work what?
Work off program, they work so many hours and it comes off their taxes, so our seniors and a lot of communities are doing it.
Bellamy, isn't it?
I think it's worth looking at.
Nope.
We got the paperwork early.
I will not entertain that.
Blacks don't vote in the dump.
I will not entertain that.
I will, um, I will go to some communities and get their information, and how they're doing and what they're doing and how it's affecting, and then maybe we can look at it for the spring. I can't use it, but you know what, I know there's tons of people who use it.
I know there's tons of people who use it and they're coming to town meetings and they're voting everything down, because they need, they need something. And maybe they'd be willing to come down and, you know, like work off a couple hours and they get some money off their tax bill. I think it's something to look at, so. I will hold off until the spring, but I will-
Well, I know, I know a person that does do it in down here. This person helps him out.
I don't know, I don't know, it's just that. But I mean, somebody has to.
Yeah, I'm not sure which department.
It depends, well, it depends on where they-
Executive secretary.
Usually the senior center director. In most towns, it is the senior center director.
And they just keep track of it.
So this guy, he does it whenever, I don't know how many hours a week. He's disabled, but he does paperwork, stuff, filing and whatever they need him to do. Really, that's it. He's just a grunt. He bounces from department to department and helps people.
But it's something there for people who want to help themselves.
I'm with you, just, I, I just, I, we, that person currently is a volunteer, right? So I can't believe that that's not a lot of work.
It depends on how you-
Right.
Well, it depends on how you open it up. I mean, if the assessors open it up, then the clerk in there could just verify the hours and, you know, at the discretion of that board, give out the filing. The building inspector could say, I'm here on Wednesday night, come on Wednesday nights. So it doesn't have to be the director. Town clerk, they could come in and help the town clerk, they could, you know.
We should probably bend around a little bit.
I mean, I don't mind going to some communities and asking them how it's working, what are the pros, what are the cons, what, you know, and putting it on for me. Let the townspeople-
I did ask the town clerk if this was something that would work for her, and she said she would rather an experienced individual who's already been trained. There would be very few things she would have available for one of the seniors to do.
In a perfect world.
And I did, I asked all the departments, the chief said he, you know, could possibly use somebody to answer the telephone when his clerk is out of the office. I mean, there, there were a few things, but not an overabundance of uses for the person.
I know the building inspector said he wouldn't mind someone helping him at Tuesday, Wednesday nights filing while he's doing permit.
But again, keep in mind, this is coming right off the tax rules, so it's no different than just hiring somebody.
Right.
No, I know, yep.
And we do offer, and it's controlled, it's a lower rate.
It is a lower rate, yeah. But we do offer, um, probably of all the surrounding towns, one of the best statutory exemptions for the seniors. We, we have a really good one for them, so we are, we are helping them out.
We are one of the best towns around.
There you go.
Do we need a motion to accept the warrant as written?
Yes, with the, uh-
With the change.
It to, I'm actually going to be looking for two motions, to accept the warrant as written, and then to approve of the articles with the exception, or support the articles with the exception of Article Five.
So is there a motion?
Oh, uh, motion to accept the warrant as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, didn't we already take a vote on the, the one?
Aye.
Oh, yep.
It was four to oh.
Yep. On Article Five, we voted four, four to nothing.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Um, on the available funding sources, I do have, um, the town clerks, uh, should that article pass, coming out of ambulance receipts reserved. Would you like me to keep that on there? Would you like me to remove it?
I would think that the town clerk would have to say where it's coming from, right? It's her article. She's supporting it. She's putting it out there, she'll be making motion. Our first article- Yep, the, to authorize any amendment or motion, the person must state where it's come from, so that's Article One, so she will have to, and she, she can kind of figure, I mean, look at this, but I don't think we should put, if we're not supporting it, she can say where-
Well, the finance committee mentioned, uh, last Wednesday evening that if it did pass, this is where they would, I believe you had said that, so I don't know.
Did the finance committee recommend this article?
We didn't recommend the article, but what we said was, we need to be prepared for if it does pass. And if it does pass, we can talk about taking that one.
Well, I don't think it should be an attachment for, I think the available funding sources should be listed, but I don't think if the, if the select and, and the finance committee aren't recommending, I don't think we should list it under there, cause then it, it's our publication. So that would make it look like we're saying to pull it from here if it does.
Yeah.
So I would say remove it. Okay. I mean, she-
Remove it.
Well, anybody that's watching tonight.
And, or being at the meeting, she'll know where to pull it from, or she'll talk to somebody acquainted to town meeting to know where to get funding. I don't think we should hide, you know, I mean, I think we need to list our money sources and let it go from there.
That's the end of it. That's all.
Um, so you've, you've voted to approve the warrant as written. We will need two copies, two originals signed, um, but I'll hold off on, on running out to make the changes until the meeting is done, but just clearly state that all you'll be doing is signing it, nothing else discussed that has to do with the warrant.
Okay. We have the, the septic betterment loan documents.
Uh, yes, this is the, um, the first loan that we had taken for 95. If you remember, at the last meeting, you signed the closing paperwork for the 105. Um, this is the first one that we're now going to attach. And there is a lengthy, unfortunately, vote that you do need to read. Yeah?
This whole first?
Yes.
All right. I, I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Millville, Massachusetts, certified that at a meeting of the board held on, today is November-
Nineteen.
Nineteen, thank you. 2012, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which the quorum was present, the following vote was passed, all of which appears upon the official record of the board in, in my custody. One, that the town shall issue a bond or bonds in, in aggregate principal not to exceed $95,000 pursuant to chapters 29C and 111 of the general laws and vote of the, of the town passed May 14th, 2007, Article 10, for any community septic management loan program. Two, that in, in anticipation of the, of the issuance of the bonds, the treasurer is authorized to issue an interim loan, not note or notes, from, from lot, from time to time in, in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $95,000. That each board, uh, each bond or note shall be issued as a single registered security and sold to the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust at a price determined pursuant to the loan agreement. That the treasurer is authorized to determine the date, the form, the maximum interest rate and the principal, the charities of each bond note. And to execute a loan agreement with, with the trust with respect to the sale of the bonds and notes. Such date, form and charities and the septic interest rate, not specific interest rate or rates of the bonds and notes to be approved by a majority of the Board of Selectmen and the treasurer as evidence, evidenced by their executive execution of the bonds or notes. That all action taken to date by the town and its officers and, and agents to, to carry out the project and its financing, including execution of any loan agreement by the treasurer, are hereby ratified, approved and confirmed. And that the treasurer and the appropriate town officials are each hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary and convenient to carry out the provisions of this note, including execution and delivery of the loan agreement and the project approval certificate and regulatory agreement relating to the project. I further cert, I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, agenda for the meeting, which, which agenda includes, included the adoption of the, of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy therefore posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in, in or on the municipal building that the office, that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with the alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29 dot 032B. At least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting that no- That's all.
I'm sorry, is that the end of it?
Yep, that is.
That no.
That, no. No, that's the end of it.
Okay. That's why I was looking for another.
Looking for a period, I'm looking for a conclusion on that sentence.
That's it. All right. So there's the motion.
So you'd be signing, um, four originals of the certificate and one original $95,000 interim loan note based on the vote that was just read.
Make a motion to accept the payment loan as read.
You gotta read it again. That ain't gonna happen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So again, you're signing in five places.
Okay, uh, next we have, uh, two local licenses for, um, St. Augustine's Parish. Father Mulcahy filled out all the appropriate paperwork, has his insurance coverage, paid the $50 for each, uh, application. He's got two $50 checks.
Yeah, it's, it's 25 each, it's just showing that it was paid.
Also, uh, one of them is December 1st, from 5:30 PM to 10:30 PM. And the other one is New Year's Eve, December 31st, from 8:00 PM to 12:30 AM. And it's going to be serving wine and beer only. At most, both times will be at 100 people. So.
Does the police department know about that and, you know, set with it?
Yep, police department, you'll see the second page has signed off for each of them.
So motion to accept at least one or both.
Make a motion to accept the St. Augustine's Club, um, Club 61 and Cheese for December 1st, 2012, 5:30 to 10:30 PM, and also the New Year's Eve party at St. Augustine's for December 31st through January 1st, 2013, from 8:00 PM to 12:30 AM.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The water side. Let me ask water and engineering proposal.
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, DEP is requiring that the town hire a third-party engineer to review the existing water filtration system. Because of the continued high levels of chlorine, uh, the, the water operator just cannot seem to tweak the system, um, so that the levels are at an acceptable steady rate. So DEP would like us to have this gentleman go in, they've worked with him before, uh, they're comfortable with him. And just see what he recommends. So this is $3,500 for his evaluation. And this does not include anything that he recommends, obviously, to tweak the system will be more. Um, right off the bat, he's told us that he, as he says, he's likely going to recommend the following modifications. He already has an idea of, of what needs to be done, so.
Already come up with $3,500.
That's for his evaluation and-
You're in the wrong, wrong line of work.
Yeah, I'm learning that. Quit about all this stuff.
As engineers.
I would like to know how he comes up with $3,500 without looking at it first.
Probably whatever the going rate is, but they evaluate their time there, their report and then their follow-through. It's just a standard-
Usually when they do this, Jennifer, they have a line item of exactly what they're going in to do. I don't see anything here with that. That's why I'd like to know where he came up with $3,500.
Well, he's got, he's got a scope of services there, Jennifer.
The 35 is for what, one?
One shot deal.
1.1, 1.2.
Yeah, it includes design plans and whatever their recommendation is, if they recommend moving something, it includes designing that.
What's my choice?
I'll just come this far with the water, we're gonna keep it going good now.
Probably should have just put a new wholesome system in when I first started. Would have been cheaper. So what do we need, uh?
A motion to accept and authorize either the chair or myself to sign. It only requires one signature.
And who did they come and, and, um, have the recommendation of? DEP?
DEP and Small Water System, yep. They both work with them.
They know if it's a going rate and, you know. I make a motion to accept the, um, water engineering proposal from Proventur Engineering LLC. And have Rowan sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a cultural council grant.
Yep, uh, Cultural Council received three thousand eight hundred seventy dollars. Uh, is their annual grant this year from the Mass Cultural Council. Um, and this is just the standard state contract, which requires the signature of the chairman of the board. So we would just need a vote to authorize the chair to sign.
I make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the council of eighteen...
Cultural Council.
Cultural, yeah, grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Who's on the cultural council?
Uh, Dorine Malali, Jackie Lima, Jennifer Hull, Corinne Barber. I can't think of the names, I might apologize to the fifth person, I can't think of her names. It might be Gail, Gail Bowe, maybe? No, Gail Bowyer, I think it is.
We just know that the library and the seniors...
Executive Secretary employment. Your contract comes up June...
Yep, my contract expires June thirtieth, um, in preparation for budget season. Generally, I question the board if it's your desire to pursue a successor contract with me or if you'll be looking elsewhere, just to give me an idea of what I should look at in preparing my budget, um, or if there's anything that you'd like to discuss with me or anything we need to work on.
I don't have any, anything myself at this time, but I do, I do wish to, I mean, this is my, just my feelings. I do wish to, or hope that, wish to stay.
Oh, I definitely would like to stay. I certainly enjoy the job, so.
And I have no reasons myself to look out, out with, so.
I, I don't have a problem entertaining it, I just, I have a problem not evaluating people. I, I think when you're giving clear goals, what you're expected to do over the next year, next two years, next three years, what are your personal goals, what are our goals for the town? I think putting them out and putting them out there, whether it's through an evaluation, whether it's through SMART goals, however you're going, however the town wants to do that, because I think by doing so, you're, you're setting that level of expectation.
I've been evaluated every year since I've been an employee.
I haven't, I've only been here since, you know, April, so I haven't seen, so...
She gets evaluated every year.
I mean, I don't know if we want to move that evaluation up so that we can kind of do that before, because I don't want to sign a, no offense, but I don't want to sign a contract and then do an evaluation and go, "Oh, boy, you know, we're really on different pages here." Um, I'd rather do the evaluation sooner and then say, see how it all is, make sure that the things we want, there's things you want, and then we can put it all together and then develop the contract from that point. Um, that's just my feelings.
Do you have the old, do you have any of her evaluations?
No. And that was one of my questions back.
Want to give...
I just need, um, I have copies of, um, your employment, um, your job qualifications and responsibilities, and I don't know if they've been revised or revisited. So that's one thing I'd like to see. Um, even, I, and if you don't want to give me copies of the evals, I can come in and look at them at some point. But I personally just rather do an evaluation first and make sure we're on the same page. And then go forward from there with the contract. I just think it would be prudent. Because you might say, "Ah, I can't live with this," or we might say, "We can't live with this," or, you know, where, where do we go from there? So I'd rather it happen prior to putting your name on the dotted line.
All right, I'll get the ball rolling on that one.
Not that I have any issues, so. If I have an issue, I'll come to you.
No doubt.
All right, so now we have, uh, Donna Cotton, employment. She's retiring from Ballina.
Um, I, as I said earlier, have a great deal of respect for Marilyn, and I understand by retiring for collecting her pension and things of that sort that this is prudent for her to become the independent contractor. And I think that the town would be remiss to lose her and her knowledge and her experience and her wealth of knowledge and her dedication to this community. So I am all in favor of changing it from an appointment to a contract type position.
I definitely, uh, absolutely, but I was kind of, I got nervous when I said retiring and then I read further and now I felt a little better.
So I think if we have Marilyn come in at some point, we can work it out, or...
Okay.
She, she might even have something, or Aguias might have something.
Yeah, I've already got some information on what she, um, she has, she's got some other ideas that she'd like to perhaps negotiate with you.
Okay.
Um, in a contract. Changing her job position and title a little bit to work. So if it is your desire to proceed with a contract and negotiate with her, you can then, um, go into negotiation, executive session at some point.
Find out what, what her...
Okay.
Absolutely.
Would you like to go into executive session this evening to discuss strategy? How are you going to proceed with that, or would you like to hold off?
Um, I don't know.
Can we just have an executive session? Can she go into an executive session with us?
Well, you'd have to go into executive session to strategize, um, to negotiate with her, so...
Do we negotiate in?
You'd probably want to go in without her at first.
I am just...
I almost like to see...
I almost want to hear what her proposal is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
She'd have to do that in open session.
I'd like to know first up before we...
If we do that, then we can go on executive session and...
I don't want to go the other way around and find out what she wants first.
We've always had a really good working relationship, and I think, you know, she gives us a proposal, even if it's via through you, through email, whatever her, whatever, or she can come here, and then we can kind of discuss it and then go forward. I don't think we need to, I mean, I wouldn't even know where to start, how to strategize and what the going rate is, or what, what kind of perks we get for that.
So we'll table the, the executive session for...
Yeah.
Yeah, a later date.
A later date.
Most likely after the holidays, we'll do that.
Final public forum? Nobody, okay, so, um, that's it. So have, everybody have a safe and, uh, very, uh, wonderful Thanksgiving. And, uh, that's it. Enjoy, and, uh, we'll see you Monday, December third, two thousand twelve, at seven PM. At the Longfellow Municipal Center is our next meeting. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
You gotta make a, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.